Hey Nick, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Mark, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
We're gonna get started here in a few minutes.
I'm sure if my screen was frozen or what.
Nope, it's not thankfully.
Awesome, okay, thanks.
Yeah. Chair, we're ready whenever you are.
All right, it is 6:33 PM on May, what is today, the 15th? May 15th, I would like to call this meeting to order. Present is me, Chair Melissa Irvin. Go ahead.
Vice Chair Ashlyn Edder.
Commissioner Mary Kendall.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of Planning Commission minutes from the February 7th meeting. If you can please update the spelling of Mary's name on those minutes and then also update that Ashlyn was present at that meeting.
Not a problem. If you want to take formal action and note those changes in your motion, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve with the changes?
This is Ashlyn and I will motion.
So Ashlyn has a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes with those changes. Do I have a second?
Mary Kendall, you have a second.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, no one is opposed. Next up is the fun part of the meeting. Election of Officers. Currently, I am the chair and Ashlyn is the vice chair. Do we need to have nominations or how would you suggest going about that, Nick?
It can be as simple as you would like it or complex as you'd like it.
Okay. Mary, do you have any interest in serving as the chair or vice chair? Are you okay with keeping it the same?
I would like it to stay the same. I make the motion.
Okay, Ashlyn, do you accept? I accept. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to keep the chair and the vice chair the same. Mary has made the motion.
I will second. This is Ashlyn.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Perfect, all are in favor, motion passes. All right, we are moving on now to public hearing section. Of the COCC Master Plan, Site Plan Review and Property Line Adjustment Files Number MP24-1 and SP-24-1 and LLA-24-1. I am now opening the public hearing. Next up, I will read the quasi judicial statement. This is the time and place set for hearing on planning file number MP24-1 and SP-24-1 and LLA-24-1. The hearing is now called to order. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will present the staff report. Applicant will present his application and supporting evidence. Any interested persons will then be provided the opportunity to present testimony or evidence in support that is neutral or that is in opposition. Applicant as the party bearing the burden of proof will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. Staff will provide closing comments. Any party may request that the written record remain open to respond to testimony presented at the hearing. At the conclusion of this hearing, the Planning Commission may close the public hearing and deliberate towards a decision, close the public hearing and defer deliberations towards a decision at a date and time certain, continue the public hearing at a date and time certain. All testimony, argument and evidence must be directed to the applicable criteria or any other approval criteria you believe to be applicable. Matters unrelated to the application are not pertinent to the Planning Commission's decisions in these proceedings. Failure on the part of any person to raise an issue that is not specific enough to afford the Planning Commission and parties to this proceeding an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the City Council and Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to conditions of approval with sufficient relevance to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Commissioners must disclose any expat, any ex parte contacts, including site visits, biases or conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature and whether you intend to participate in these proceedings. Ashlyn?
Mary?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Ashlyn did shake her head no. I did want to disclose that I live near these subject properties. However, I do not have an economic interest in this proposal and I feel that I can remain unbiased on the proposal. Does anyone present or on the commission, if you would like to question my impartiality? Now is the time.
I'm good.
All right, seeing no objections, we can move forward. Is there anybody online, Nick?
No objections or identified online, either in the chats or verbally.
Great, thank you. All right, staff will now deliver the staff report.
Okay. So I'm gonna try to do a couple things all at the same time. And I will, I will also admit that I did not write this land use decision, so I have reviewed it, but I don't know it extremely in and out. So if you've got specific questions, we can go through it, but the subject property is zoned open space and public facility. It is owned by the Central Oregon Community College. It's larger than 10 acres, so it is subject to the city's master plan requirements in the development code. And so they are looking to add a building onto the site. And so with that premise, they are required to file for an master plan. A new building requires or new use or expansion to uses requires site plan review approval. And because there are two subject properties involved here and they would like to build a building in location that would in effect be on both properties, it does require property line adjustment as well. So in Madras, Oregon, we try to make the land use process as easy as possible. And so the findings and decision that you see before you that's in the packet includes findings of compliance for all three of those land use actions. So the master plan, the site plan and the property line adjustment, okay? We could have split those out, but then you run the risk of maybe an appeal on one of them and the other two being approved and so it can get disjointed. So this is part of our, what I call, good customer service and helping people out in our community. So they are proposing to build a new building on the site. Staffs reviewed the criteria and we've developed findings of compliance demonstrating that the applicant can meet, has met the criteria. There are conditions of approval proposed in that decision. I will say that in my review of the decision, it appears that an additional condition of approval is needed that's not listed in the staff report. And generally speaking, that condition of approval would require the applicant to comply with the provisions of the Public Works Director's memorandum. And the reason for that is that document is identifying the required public improvements, the standards of construction for any of those public improvements and some of the onsite improvements, notably the stormwater. But also the Public Works Director in that memorandum has gone through an analysis that will allow the applicant to defer some of the improvements until a third phase of development. Right? The building that exists today would be the first phase. The boat building they're proposing to build right now would be the second phase. And so the third phase would allow them to defer public improvements. So when I reviewed it, it wasn't entirely clear that the conditions of approval allow that. And so by adding this condition of approval, it would make that very clear. With that, we've given notice of the application to agency staff. Received their comments. This decision reflects those comments. We've also sent notice to the adjacent property owners. Published notice of this public hearing this evening in the Madras Pioneer and we have not received any comments to the record. And to be clear, no comments at all. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the proposal with the additional condition of approval that has been identified. And so kind of wrapping up my staff report, as you go through your public hearing and when you get into the last part, J, Planning Commission deliberation, we can talk about that additional condition of approval and how you might take formal action appropriately to include that. But that includes my staff report. Give me questions of me before you proceed through the hearing. But that concludes my staff report. Give me questions of me before you proceed through the hearing.
I don't think anyone has any questions. So go ahead and proceed.
Uh we would go on to the applicant testimony at this point. And so we have one person here. Uh Mark, who is representing COCC.
Yeah, I'm Mark Stoller with Opsis. Good evening everyone. Is is Jeremy from the college there as well?
No, he's not. You're you're the man, Mark. I got faith in you.
No, no worries. I know Jerry.
Only four people in the council chambers, the three commissioners and myself, so uh looks like uh you have a really good chance at uh getting approval this evening.
Okay, I I I appreciate that. No, the uh I know Jeremy is gonna try but at a pretty busy uh schedule today. Um yeah, as as Nick mentioned, the college uh wants to add a second building to the campus. Um the building would be two stories and it would about 25,000 square feet and it will su- on the first floor, they will have a daycare childcare center. They are partnering with the Children's Learning Center there in Madras, Teresa and her group. Um and so they will lease the first floor from the college. And then the second floor is to serve kind of their growing academic needs. Uh primarily um nursing and allied health uh professionals. And so there's science labs up there, faculty offices as well as then labs to teach nursing as well as medical assistance and some of the other allied health programs. Important, obviously an important building to the college. Um you know, they they have growing needs and they they're trying to serve um Jackson County uh with with the growth on this campus. The development to support the building the parking and such, we've actually overdesigned the parking. So there's more parking than is required by by planning and by code, but that was important to the college. Uh this is a little unique, having a daycare on the first floor. Because we're gonna have uh you know, 80 to 100 little people show up twice a day, show up and get picked up. Um and so there's additional parking there at the entry um to that lower level which would on the south side of the building to really accommodate uh drop off and pickup that's gonna happen twice a day. And so that the building is organized where you where we've got little people on the lower floor and then larger big people, students on the upper floor and parking and services are kind of segregated in that way. Um we also have a a connecting deck between the two buildings. And so it's very important to the college that the the upper level of of both buildings function as one. And so there's some outdoor space for the college. Utilities for the new building will all be separate as well as designed for future expansion. As Nick mentioned, um we've developed a a 10-year uh master plan um which is showing an additional two buildings on the campus. Um and really just kind of extending their growth in a in a northwest fashion, um kind of along the contours of the site, along the hillside. Um you'll see here, we've also uh included uh the future roundabout and extension that comes off of that. Um we thought that was important to to understand the the impacts on the campus. And as you can see, a a feature entry for the college uh off that that new road. We have done a traffic study. It was all part of our submission. The the amount of traffic gonna be created by the by this new building um really doesn't create any challenges for the current ro- uh you know, transportation system there. And so we're 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 good from that standpoint. Um we, the the building as I, it it's two stories in height, but it, the first floor is gonna be buried in the hillside. So it's almost like a daylight basement. Um we thought that was important, one because of the neighbors on the the upslope side uh presume preserving their their views, so it won't be any any different than uh the existing building that's on the campus now. Um and then, you know, we've we've got some pretty modest landscaping going with the building. The presence and is important to the college uh as as well as your standards. Um but being there in the high desert, we we keep it pretty pretty simple and pretty drought tolerant. I think that's about it. Any any questions or anything I can answer?
Um this is Commissioner Kendall. I do have a question. Two questions. First is uh the flow of the drop off and pickup. Uh is there any way to see how that flows so that it doesn't you know, it's not just parking, stopping and picking up. Sometimes it just has to go, you know, enter in one way, flow out the other. Is it something like that or is it where they, you just have additional parking, they park, get out, go in and and get their children and then come back?
Yeah, the way, the way the children.
Get in and out of?
Mm-hmm. The way the Children's Learning Center operates is each child is walked into the building into their classroom. So uh parking is is important on that lower level and on that's the south side of the building. And so patrons will part- parents will park, they'll walk their kids in, come back, get in their car and leave.
Okay.
We've designed this so that the the existing entry of the college could be used and they could loop around. Or they can also come in at the new entry. Either way, so there's some flexibility there.
Okay, so there's a couple of entrances. And then the the roundabout, is that something that's gonna come with this first phase of this building?
No, that's a development. Uh Nick can probably answer that better than I can. Off in the future.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that that's one of the um reasons why we're, I I've suggested we add a condition of approval with the Public Works Directors memorandum be a uh condition of approval. So um the the issue here is that this proposed development doesn't meet thresholds required for uh constructing the roundabout, meaning it doesn't generate enough trips to necessitate that roundabout. Does it contribute towards it? You bet. But it in of its by itself can't can't do that. And so um I think also what I want to point out in the master plan is so the existing access off of uh B Street is what we call full access, so in and out on that same driveway. And then the new one uh on the bottom side of the the master plan here is full access as well. But as you look to the north where there are two new buildings are at, they're showing a new road connecting into the future city view.
Is that gonna be now or or in the future?
So that's the master plan again.
Again.
Why why we're deferring that uh
Okay.
Improvement. And so one thing I did miss, but I think it's important to the planning commission, is that staff's recommending this master plan uh remain valid for 10 years.
Right.
Which allows uh the the community college to utilize the land use decision that you make for 10 years without having to go back and get it reapproved. So uh they could file a site plan uh in, you know, after in 30 days, so to speak, or, you know, nine years and uh and 364 days and still utilize that.
So the road and the roundabout are something that could possibly be done within that 10-year bracket, not later than that. But could be within that 10 years?
So the the timing of the roundabout construction is really not necessarily related to COCC.
Okay.
It's more or less related to city growth, city resources and the need for that roundabout based on how that uh intersection is operating today, tomorrow and then years in the future.
And the same with the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and and uh kind of taking it a step further, but I think our planning commissioners, perhaps Mark and 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 others will appreciate this. So when we established our Housing Urban Renewal District, we included City View in that district, the the actual right of way. Knowing that COCC was only gonna build unfortunately three or four buildings there and we can't hang them with building uh over a quarter mile or more of major collector road.
I mean, under.
Right? So so that Housing Urban Renewal District is likely gonna help fi- finance the majority of that connection there. And that'll be super important. So my guess is in probably 10 years, you're gonna have not only the roundabout, but you're also gonna have that City View connection as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt there, Mark. Uh did you have any other questions or comments or remarks to make?
No, that that was perfect. Thank you, Nick. Were were there any other questions from the commissioners?
I did want to note that Jeremy Green has, oh, he is here. So if there's any part of the presentation you wanted to pass on to him, he is here. Um I have reviewed multiple plans for this building because I am on the board of the Children's Learning Center. And I'm very excited about this opportunity that Madras has to expand any type of learning in our community. Um and especially with the addition of possible daycare, um that's really exciting. So I'm excited about these plans. I think that it really could be a big draw for the future of Madras.
Totally agree. Um and I will say, uh not related to the criteria of this land use decision, but as your community development director, I I see an immense opportunity for the the community college and and the community here and and as as uh educational opportunities grow on this site in our community, we're likely gonna need some more housing, right? And uh um having been in the housing game for a little while, there's probably an opportunity to leverage some some land for some housing for either students or or otherwise in our community. So um COCC staff will probably hear hear me say this for the next few years or more. But uh so what what would happen in that sense, just just so people understand is if if COCC said, oh, well, we want to do some new use on this property that we haven't contemplated before, that's not in this master plan, they then come back to you to amend that master plan. So your criteria allows that to be amended and then you would consider those changes at that time.
I think Jerem- did Jeremy show up?
He he's print- president accounted for.
Okay, awesome.
And he he's giving me the wink that you are doing a phenomenal job. I I think uh he he can uh take the night off.
Sounds good. Any any further questions?
I I don't think we have any further questions. I appreciate that um you were available and that Nick walked through this plan with us. Um there is currently no one in the audience and there is nobody online for testimony. Is that true?
Uh yes, proponent testimony, neutral testimony or opponent testimony.
Okay, so we can skip through those three items. And then do you, does staff have anything further to provide?
No, um I I would still provide the applicant uh the ability to providing rebuttal testimony. Uh in this case, probably the only thing that they may want to discuss should they want to is the uh uh staff suggesting that we add a condition of approval that requires the the Public Works memorandum be a condition of approval.
Okay, great. So applicant, we had been talking about making sure that the incorporation of the memo from the Public Works Department was part of this decision so that it would be part of the um conditions of approval going forward. I just want to make sure that you have a chance to comment on that, whether or not that is amenable to you or if you've seen the seen that memorandum.
Nick, now that Jeremy is there, Jeremy, that the memorandum is discussing the future roundabout and road extension and deferring uh financial participation in its construction. Is that, did I get that right, Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
But he's not speaking in the mic, but generally he's uh understands that and is agreeable to it.
Okay, great.
Okay, is there anything else from the applicant that you would like to discuss?
Not for myself, no, thank you.
Great. Jeremy? Okay, so Jeremy just mentioned that he has reviewed the memorandum and spoken with Mark and also um been in communication with the Public Works Director. Okay, so moving on, anything else from staff? Okay, so now we are moving on to the commission. We have three options. We can close the hearing now and deliberate towards a decision this evening. We can close the hearing and defer deliberation to a time and date certain, or we can continue the public hearing to a time and date certain. Which option would you like to? Are you guys ready to make a decision? Do you need to discuss any further? Okay. Alright, so if there are no further uh questions from um here, we would be looking for a motion. Uh do you have a sample motion available?
Yes, and so what I'm hearing is you'll like to close the public hearing at 6:59.
Yep, so we will close the public hearing at 6:59 PM.
Yes, so a sample motion would be to approve the findings and decision as proposed with the addition of a condition of approval that would require compliance with the Public Works Director's memorandum related to the matter.
Alright, can I get a motion on the floor?
This is Commissioner Eder. I will motion.
A little coaching, so you could either do two things. You can either restate exactly what I said or you can say, I I would make that motion.
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kendall, I second the motion.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 There are no opposing votes. Uh motion carries. Well, congratulations. Can keep moving forward. I guess in my mind, just as a point of question to Nick, the COC expansion has been talked about and deliberated for a while. Is it fairly normal that it is to this stage before it comes to the planning commission or was this possibly delayed or is this like the normal course where you kind of jog ahead with planning and wait until you have an idea of exactly what you want to do and then you go to the planning commission?
Um I I don't know if I could answer that. Mark probably works in a lot of more jurisdictions to understand that, but we don't get too many master plan approvals, at least yet. We will in the future, but wha- what what you're seeing is really the benefit of having the master plan provisions in your code. The you you're requiring property owners, developers, otherwise to think a little bit more about how their land and the and the development thereon uh connects in with the other land uses, infrastructure and otherwise in the community. And so um I would say, y- you know, Opsis has done a really good job advancing this project. I would say I don't think that they have hastily moved through this process and uh omitted anything. I also don't think they were unnecessarily slow. I think their pace is actually pretty good and quite quite measured and appropriate. Um taking some time to uh consider feedback from city and others and and making sure that their traffic analysis was uh appropriate. So it was a good good tight submittal. And um so you know, this is what you get when you, you know, propose uh, you know, work with staff initially, listen to that feedback, responsive to it, understand the standards, resolve problems and submit a a really good proposal.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank thank you, Nick. And I, you know, I'd add to that, we myself do a lot of college facility planning. And your process here was very straightforward and fluid. And and pretty simple, which helps a lot. And so the ability to combine what would be a normal land use process for a facility with looking ahead 10 years was like, is that very fluid and very easy to do, wi- without a lot of extra required work or information. It was just the right amount. To the point where, you know, no, it has not slowed us up. Um we are actually uh working with Kirby Nagelhout out of Bend Contractor. Um, we are actually uh working with Kirby Nagelhout out of Bend Contractor. Um, we're finalizing what the cost to build the building is going to be, and they're going to be. Once we get through county permitting, which is the next step for us, we'll be starting construction this summer.
Wow, that's exciting.
I don't know if Jeremy's ready for that yet, but it's coming at him.
He he's he's nodding his head. He's ready, he says.
Okay, awesome.
Well, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
We can move on to item number six, uh, the department activity. Report.
Yeah, I'm probably going to make this a little bit brief. Um, so. We've got a couple of things we want to report on. We we continue to have a vacancy in the planning commission, so if. You know of anyone that would be interested in serving in the planning commission. You're some of our best ambassadors or best salesmen to uh represent what your job looks like. There's also a component of it. That maybe you're not able to answer. So if you find someone that may be interested. Send them our way. We're happy to uh sit down with them and and talk with them about the wonderful job being a planning commissioner. Wanted to uh note that uh working with um. Several housing projects in the community, uh, it's a it. Probably picking up on a theme here. There's a lot of uh housing that's going on, so we're working with. Best Care, they're looking at building some supportive housing, which is some of the hardest. Uh, housing to uh uh a build and and operate for. Uh, those with uh. Uh, codependency and other mental health uh challenges. Uh, we're working on a twenty-eight home town home project just above the movie theater. Uh, that's a pretty exciting one. That'll be our first town home. Project uh constructed. We we've approved another one. Uh, we are also. We did finalize the uh Yaro um. Urban growth boundary amendment. We're working with them on their master plan. Um, I think that uh we'll need to make some further code amendments to uh address their challenges. You know, we tried to do a surgical amendment. Uh, a while back. Unfortunately, uh, you know, it's springtime, so that would be probably called a strike. We didn't quite uh connect on that one, so we need to make. Some further code amendments, but uh that's progressing uh. What I would characterize as fairly well. Um, we're. Need to spend some some good time thinking about how we thoughtfully amend our code so that not only is. Responsive to the conditions or circumstances of that land that they want to master plan. Uh, but also, you know, think about unintended consequences, try to avoid those. How it may be, how those code changes may affect other properties uh that are subject to a master plan and uh making sure that it. Doesn't compromise your ability to get the needed housing in your community. Um, so that's that's a good project. Uh, we are kicking off two. Uh, housing related planning efforts. The planning commission will be uh somewhat involved in those. The first is a homelessness report. Uh, staff received uh grant funding for this project. And uh initially, it was conceived as a homelessness plan. However, our consultant said, no, we don't think you should do that. We think you should have a report first. Establish the the kind of factual basis for understanding of the homeless need in your community. Then if your your council or community wants to move with more of an implementing plan, you could do that. So we're breaking that down into two pieces and. That report should be ready for uh this fall. Uh, somewhat similar timeline is our housing action plan. So in two thousand eighteen, uh, planning commission council approved this housing action plan. It's almost five years old, so we're updating it. Uh, and so that should be uh completed. Majority of that should be completed by end of calendar year. Uh, some of the things we're seeing is. We're we're seeing a lot of market rate housing, and I think you're going to see the city from a policy perspective shift gears, shift resources. So we uh start to uh. See uh more workforce and affordable housing constructed in our community with our precious limited resources. Um, just submitted today, uh, final grant application uh materials for the industrial site readiness plan. So this is a infrastructure plan, uh, just focused on our industrial area and airport. That's a two thousand seventeen uh uh plan that we have today. But it does not include future or desired land uses. So we're uh, we're going to update that plan to include that, but also the infrastructure that would be necessary. To accommodate uh additional manufacturing uses, advanced manufacturing and data centers. And so one of the key uh components of that project would be convene meetings with. Not only Deschutes Valley Water, but our uh electrical providers, Pacific Power, perhaps uh Central Electric Co-op. And figure out what we need to do uh to put in this plan to uh ensure that uh large volumes of power. About three hundred megabytes, uh, 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 megawatts, pardon me, wrong unit to measure there. Uh, could be could be um brought to that industrial layer, which is really what you need. For for large scale data center development like you've seen in Primeville, the gorge and otherwise. Um. Again, uh, we're also working on a few transportation related projects. So one is planning and two are safety. So the planning related project is the city's transportation system plan. You'll recall identifies some improvements south of Fairgrounds Road, all the way down to uh. Uh, Highway twenty-six, the Chevy dealership. And and we we just don't have a lot of uh local street network down in that area, so we needed a refinement planning effort to figure out that. Uh, that should be coming to you probably this fall as well. Uh, refinement plan of how we're going to address uh our traffic needs on Highway ninety-seven, but our local traffic on that. Um, and then we we do have uh two uh safety studies. Uh, the first is Jefferson County has a transportation safety action plan. Uh, that was a federal grant that the city of Madras and Jefferson County submitted. Uh, our friends in Deschutes County called me and said, how in the heck did you get that? And I said, I hired good people. Uh, so it was very competitive, so that's a. It's a over three hundred thousand dollar project that will look at. County and city transportation facilities and how we ensure that they're safe, and if uh changes are needed. Uh, there's funding after this project's completed to actually construct the needed safety improvement. So that's that's neat. Similarly, uh, there's the what's called the US ninety-seven Madras to Hybridge, so High Highway ninety-seven from the. South end of uh Madras all the way to Hybridge, there's a safety corridor study, and that's the same type of project. Looking at how do we make that that corridor, that section of the highway there uh more safe and uh. Uh, two very challenging projects because we're dealing, quite honestly, with ODOT who doesn't have money. And has very particular policies about how they uh design, construct and manage their other facilities. So we're doing our best on that. Uh, I'll 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 finish up with two things. One uh related to homelessness and economic development. Uh, from a uh homeless perspective, you'll see in front of the paper. Community Development is spending a lot of time in Willow Creek right now. I spent about three hours there yesterday. We're trying to remove trash and begin remediating uh that area. It is uh. Unfortunately, experiencing a a very large amount of contamination. It's about a thousand feet from one of the city's uh backup domestic water wells. So on June eleventh, we will be closing that site. We're working with the um campers down in that area to transition out of there. And so that uh. To say the least, is taking a lot of time and attention uh from our department and other other participating agencies. From an economic developer pers- uh uh perspective, the city will be hiring an edco position. Uh, I should say the city and county. Um, and so they'll they'll actually be uh sitting here at City Hall. We. Are starting to recruit that position fairly soon. So uh, it's been a number of years since we've had a a manager. Working on uh traded sector development. Uh, candidly, I think uh the times are requiring that they just not. Uh, focus on traded sector economic development, um, but there's probably a little bit of commercial. Uh, uh, projects they could work on too. So those are pretty, that's a pretty uh nice change, add capacity to our community. And we've got a lot of opportunity. Nearly every developer I talked to says, man, I I I just don't understand. How come our people aren't here more developing more homes and businesses and otherwise? It's just so expensive elsewhere. It's a nice quality of life. And so, um, you know, I think as people really start to uh uh reevaluate their circumstance. Prioritize quality of life and where where they can do business most easily, Madras is probably a pretty good choice. So um, this economic development position would help out on that. So. And uh finally, we we are hiring two interns for the summer, maybe maybe three for our department and uh. So that's that's uh exciting for us. We've never had that before and. You know, hiring is really challenging, especially when you look, we have a basically a two and a half person department. We lose one person. Capacity is really lost. Uh, some of you have businesses or work with teams where you lose one person, oh my, it 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 really compromises your ability to do your work. So one of our our uh perspectives is. Maybe we can start growing our own through internship program, raise awareness, the great work we're doing here. Obviously, you can't hire all of them, but they are going to understand what we are doing here. Build a rapport with them, help them uh get through their career, get a a good landing. Space and as they get experience or we have openings, uh, bring them back. So a lot of good things happen in the department.
And great, Nick. Thank you for that update. Do you have an update for the next meeting?
We we do not have any uh planned meetings.
Okay.
In in the near future, so uh. I I actually don't believe we will have any meetings in June.
Okay, great.
And so, uh, just to remind the the commissioners, we usually. Skip the first meeting in July. Uh, perhaps obvious, but I'll just say, uh, we look right, respect everyone's uh Fourth of July and give ourselves a break. Uh, especially if we we have a little bit of discretion there in terms of scheduling those hearings. So if you do, you'll have one, a second meeting in July. And then the opposite would be true for August. Because the holidays towards the end of the month, uh, what we do is we schedule one for beginning of August if you need one.
Okay, so for right now, nothing in June and then try to reserve the later one in July.
Yes.
Earlier one in August.
Yeah, we we try to manage the uh scheduling to accommodate your summer desires.
Well, hopefully the planning can are the your vacations as well. Great, thank you. All right, is there anything else?
That is it for staff.
Okay, great. Then it looks like I can close the meeting at seven fifteen P M.
Thank you.